Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes. Is there a, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve of the minutes?
Have you reviewed the minutes?
I think so.
Any show?
Give that a minute. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes. Okay, first such to do order of business here, this is a Preside Judicial Public Hearing regarding the consideration of S.R. seventeen oh one, Elsberg setback reduction request for thirty-nine twenty-three Pacific. The applicant, Rich Elsberg Construction Inc., on behalf of property owner Richard Hume and all, requests a setback reduction to the front yard setback of thirteen feet and the south yard, south side yard setback of four feet, in conjunction with foundation repair under existing structure. The property is located at thirty-nine twenty-three Pacific Avenue, Tax Lot three thousand, map four one zero zero six B.C., and is in a residential moderate density R one zone. Municipal Code Section seventeen point eighty-two point oh twenty standards requires a front yard setback of at least fifteen feet and a side yard setback of at least five feet. The request will be reviewed against the Municipal Code Section seventeen point six feet four point zero one zero setback reduction provisions established. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission here in this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any extraordinary contacts? Has any commission member made a citation?
Yes.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a setback reduction. This differs somewhat from the other setback reductions you see on nearly all of your agendas and the very little that's actually happening here that would be visible to the eye when the project's done. The question comes up then, why, why are we here if all we're doing is repairing a foundation? And the answer has to do with, it's kind of a look behind the curtains as to what I can do administratively and what I can't do. I routinely approve foundation repairs in this city all the time, even to non-conforming structures, but I can only do that when the value of the repair is less than fifty percent of the value of the building. A larger building or a more substantial building or newer building, that's usually not a problem. This is a pretty small building and it's older, so the value from the county assessor's office is relatively small compared to the value of the foundation repair. You can see the numbers there, the foundation repair actually exceeds the assessor's value of the building. That's past my authority to approve administratively, hence this is before you for a public hearing decision. The actual setbacks are in that table, four feet, two inches, the closest on the south side, and about thirteen feet, seven inches at the closest on the street side, the front side yard. If you saw the building, you can see where it sits on the lot. There are some photographs in the back of the staff report that show both the location and the kind of the way that house sits. There is letters from nearby property owners. Canavan, yeah, Canavan and Hume and all which also attached to this. That's all I have by way of a staff report unless you have some questions on this.
No. Any additional correspondence? I gather not, not an additional?
Just what I mentioned.
Okay. Okay, this is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue or accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to report the decision maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name, name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is the presentation by the applicant?
Ah, yes.
Sir?
My name is Chris Woyt. I work at Elsberg Construction. Address?
Mailing address?
P.O. Box two-two-six-seven Gierhard, Oregon. And I'm representing the Searls family. Sears family, sorry. One of the things we just wanted to make clear, you kind of went over more of the information than I thought you would, is Elsberg Construction is only doing a foundation repair. We're not going up, changing the look of the structure in any way. The house is basically settling around the center chimney, two and three quarters of an inch. I've got pictures of the foundation falling apart. Basically, you can see through it all the way around. Joel Bergman is gonna lift it up to level and we'll pour a new foundation underneath, and that's the extent of what we're gonna do just to save the house for him. Would you like to see any of the pictures?
Why don't you hold those, would you, unless anybody else would like to see them at this time, would you?
Sure.
Okay. I was gonna say, hold the secretary's sheet, you have some questions, but go ahead.
Very nice.
Interesting.
And you already mentioned all the setbacks, and we did have it surveyed, so those numbers were from Castle Rock survey. So, everything else, you went over already. Unless you have any questions or anything you'd like to know?
Well, I was just curious about, does the city inspector come down in the process of pouring the foundation and?
Yes.
And that sort of thing, so then is that foundation reinforced, what I meant?
Yes, we've already actually had it engineered, and we were going forward with the process, till we figured out that the value of the house wasn't gonna allow us to proceed anymore, and that's when we decided to go this route. Yeah, we've done all that. Like I said, Joel Bergman will come in, lift it, save the structure. We'll be getting a building permit, so everything will go through the city.
I'd add their building permits already here waiting this, yeah. This was revealed during our review of the building permit.
How much would it cost to change where it sits to accommodate the setbacks?
The problem with that is their grandfather in nineteen forty-two built the center chimney himself, and we don't think, and Joel Bergman looked at it, that if we try to lift that chimney or move that along with the house, that it would survive it. And that's kind of the main focus of the house, is that chimney right in the center of it, and so. But, like you referred to, the size of the house, I mean, by the time you start getting into, yeah, the cost to basically tear the whole house apart and move it, they're, they want to keep it.
Well, and instead of working chimney, will it?
Yes.
Be able to work properly?
And it is one of the city's historical homes too, so we're trying to keep it.
Other questions? Thank you. May have some other questions later, given the discussion is. Are there presentations by proponents?
Yes, I speak. I'm Dorothy Sears Canavan, Seattle, Washington, sixteen hundred forty-third Avenue East, number two ten. First of all, thank you for hearing this, our request this evening. We greatly appreciate it. We want to save our cabin. We have now the fourth generation enjoying it, and we want to continue to ask is, we know that this foundation has to be fixed if we're gonna save this cabin. And I don't know if Chris passed you pictures of the interior, that it is very special to us. The outside is simple, but the inside is very special to us. Hardly ever built it that way. Means a lot to us. Three of us own it now, and we hope to pass it down to our children and grandchildren. I want to ask you if you have any questions about the document I prepared for you, that's in front of you. I tried to detail our feelings about our cabin and what's to be done and why.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other proponents who would like to speak? Are there any presentations by opponents? Is there a staff response?
I'd add one thing to what Chris mentioned, and that's the cost of sliding that building over the chimney part that I actually hadn't realized, but the, the other part that comes up in that discussion is usually you, when you slide a house over even a small number of inches, you usually end up having to dig up all the underground utilities and move them to, which is a not insubstantial cost on this. I don't know what that number would be on this house, but that comes into play to the location of the buried utilities.
Did the applicant or proponent wish to make additional statements? Okay, the public, I have no reason to believe that this is gonna be continued. So, the public hearing part closed, and we move to discuss, to discussion, to consideration. Any opinions on the subject?
I appreciate that this is a petition to, to do no more than rebuild the structure as opposed to trying to extend it even further into non-compliance.
It seems like a further reasonable question.
I would agree with you, and I like that it's storied, I did too. That's the important part.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that the Elsberg setback reduction request for thirty-nine twenty-three Pacific be approved. Any further discussions? Alicia?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes. Okay.
We will get the decision document on that out tomorrow. The building permit won't be able to be signed until the appeal period's eroded, which is twenty days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to have one once in a while. Okay. Uh, the next item in the business is, this opens the public hearing. This is a continuation of a legislative public hearing regarding continuation of the public hearing and consideration for ZIO seventeen dash L one Short Term Rental Amendments, Chapter seventeen point seventy-seven. The City of Cannon Beach requests the zoning ordinance text amendment. Revision of Municipal Code seventeen point seventy-seven Short Term Amendments. The proposed amendments address short term rental permit administration, enforcement, inspection, revocation, and standards. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of Municipal Code Section seventeen point eighty-six point zero seven zero point A, Amendments Criteria. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission here in this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Is there a further staff report?
This is a continuation from your last month's hearing. The only thing that's different here is that I incorporated some comments from that hearing and from the Chairman Lundee in the packet on attachment C. Since then, Chairman Lundee and I had an additional conversation, identified some other changes that I'm gonna go out and I'll let him characterize as fairly minor. I mean, they're, they're worth making, but I, I was not able to incorporate them into the pack in front of you, so I'm not sure if anyone will handle that. The hearing's still open, and you do have at least one kiss correspondence here and possibly some people who want to testify. At the end of that, you can decide to make further changes, look at a final packet in March, perhaps, or maybe on the fly, or with some work you can get to a recommendation tonight. It's really up to you. I don't have this scheduled for the March City Council to receive your recommendation, but I do have it tentatively scheduled for an April City Council hearing to receive your recommendation. So you could at least theoretically continue this to your March meeting if you need to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, let's see, I'm not sure who the. Here we go. This is the only piece of additional correspondence I had. This is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue or accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to report the decision maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Are there presentations by opponents of the request? Okay, are there presentations by opponents of the request? Is there anybody who would like to make a presentation who doesn't, who just wants to comment on it or something of the sort, but doesn't consider that they're either, I, this is not rare for anybody here who doesn't come to a lot of these, wants to make a useful comment on it but doesn't consider that they're either advocating for or against it. Good, moving right along. I gather in that case that there's, there's somewhere here response.
Actually, there's one thing I wanted to say about the letter in there, the, the finger packet night, and that raises an interesting thing, and it's not a abstract theoretical comment. That situation has actually happened quite recently, where we, the lottery winner was somebody who was working under some, some violations. So, that's, that's not a theoretical possibility. It's an actual outcome that has happened.
If we were to say, yeah, that's a good idea. Have you drafted a?
No, I haven't.
Uh, I would expect that Mr. Olson or one of his co-conspirators would probably be prepared to, and I could probably draft it if he'd be just out of curiosity, would that become a new paragraph?
Yeah, you could, we can either, I, there's several ways you could do it. You could, if, if you wanted to just get this off of your table, you could just say, move this forward with a recommendation that we also incorporate a change along those lines, and let the city council work out the details of the wording.
It seems to me this is such a rare asset, such a valuable item, this makes sense to me that, if you have a violation, you can't get it into the line.
Well, if I, I, it seems to me we had a, one part of our discussion had to do with this, and then it, uh, once the person was no longer under that penalty, that expired or paid fine or whatever, then, then they would be able to be back on the.
That's the way I would foresee it happening. People, people who are in a violation situation are, you know, egregiously trying to, to sneak by. They're just, they got caught up in misunderstanding more often than not, and those, those violations expire and drop off the pa, the table, and then I would assume you'd be back in the eligibility category for the lottery draw at that point.
So, this would leave them out of the lottery for one year, but they could go back after the one year?
Yeah, that's a, that's a possibility, or once they've resolved the violation. There's a lot of ways that could be configured here. If they're viola, if they're in a violation situation because of a, say, a fourteen day violation, yeah, that would drop off after a period of time. If the violation has to do with an inspection problem, they smoke detectors didn't have batteries, that's usually something to be correct same day or very shortly afterwards. So that's, that's not what I would, I wouldn't hold somebody up for a year for something like that necessarily. That's how I would see this being implemented.
So, in one of the letters, there was a party that was concerned about the fourteen day occurring during Christmas and New Years. So, the fourteen day starts when they start occupying the rental. And that can be anytime?
Yes, yeah, that can be whenever it occurs, yeah.
So that really is not a valid point that they're making.
Well.
And so the coverage was too long.
It, it depends on how those stays line up. It can be a problem. It just depends on how long people stay and what the situation is, you know, before and after Christmas, where those holidays fall in the week. It is possible that that fourteen day rule forces you to drop the reservation that you otherwise would have had in an otherwise very quiet time of the year. I don't think it's entirely fictitious. I think that actually does happen, not all, not all the time, not every year, not every month.
I don't, I don't quite understand the problem.
I'm paraphrasing here. The, the problem, as I understand it, is that you have, in the.
You have fourteen days in which you can rent once.
Yeah, in the, the quietest part of the winter, you have three holidays that people like to rent, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years, and it's quite possible, depending on how the calendar works and how those rentals work out, that you aren't, you might have three people, three separate parties that want to rent those three separate holidays, and you can't take them because of the fourteen day rule. That was the point people were trying to make here.
And so?
The and so part.
We have a fourteen day rule.
Yes, that's, that would be the, that would be a response, it's that it's, the rule is.
And there was a suggestion for a week as a possibility, but what they have now, as far as I understand, on fourteen days, you don't have a limitation on how many homes can have that designation correct.
Right, that's an, that's the, there's no cap.
So, in my mind, if you moved it to a week, then I would want to see a number that could, would be allowed to do that.
You're, yes, I see what you're saying. One, what I've been telling people, and I think what I told you at the last hearing or maybe at the work session, was the, the council has directed us to split these amendments to the short term rental program into two sections. This section is what I'm gonna call the procedural section. It really deals with a bunch of problems we've had at staff level administering and enforcing this, but we've tried to keep substantive changes out of it. The next round is going to involve the substantive changes that I think you're talking about, a possible cap on the number of fourteen day permits, reinterpretation of how the fourteen day rule might be spaded or enforced, that sort of thing. I think, as the, as I believe the council has divided this, more appropriately falls in that second batch of amendments, which I think are gonna get to your desk. Kind of going out on a limb here, late spring, early summer, something like that. Those haven't really started yet, but I mean, we've certainly heard a lot of testimony and information, I gathered information from the short term rental community about these, but we don't have a draft on the substantive part of this yet. It's, I think, still to come. And the amendment you're talking about, at least in my opinion, would belong in that second batch more appropriately.
I, I'm happy to have you consider the things that we discussed, the things that you can just incorporate. I think that's true. There's one thing on page twenty-one that I think I'd like to bring up. I don't want to, I've got my own nefarious reasons for wanting to not extend this relatedly, but the, the last item on there seems like there's a real, uh, about appeal? That there's a real discontinuity between what's happening a lot of time, I think, and what is insane, that, uh, I think a lot of, I, my impression is that there are people who are renting routinely without a rental permit, and nobody's hearing anything about it, and hasn't, and then suddenly, if somebody brings it up, then suddenly they're getting slapped with five hundred dollars per day, potentially going back quite a while, and it seems to me that it would be worthwhile either for us or for the council, or maybe to move this one into the substantive bundle of issues, to have either a range of punishments or, or something, so that there isn't such an extreme break between, I, I can easily imagine somebody being slapped with a twenty or thirty thousand dollar fine based on this, whether the city would ever actually do that or not, that it's on the book, and.
Well, I'm not sure it is. This is a matter of being fined five hundred dollars for each day it is rented, not was rented. My, my point is, when someone is, is caught red handed, renting without a permit, thereafter, for each day that the loan is rented, there'll be a five hundred dollar fine.
So you're saying it's not retroactive for?
Well, you know, I, I would argue that if I were reading this, you know, in dire straits.
It could certainly be, I, I think that, that would, that would move things in the direction that I have in mind. It wouldn't be hard to, for either you or me, I think, to add some clarifying sort of reverts or something there to, to make it clear that that's what we're, we're meaning. Mark or Alicia, can you clarify what the city's practice is on this?
The, the practice has been to, when we find somebody renting without a permit, is to, and I'm, I'm gonna make this sound glib, but I don't mean to, but it's, it's to threaten them with a large fine, get them in here, and assuming that they're agreeing to cooperate with us, get under the program, get a permit, be inspected, follow the rules, we generally either reduce or waive the fine, get them signed up, and move forward. It, it, a lot of it depends on, you know, how difficult people are being, that sort of thing. There's a lot of what our attorney calls prosecutorial discretion in there, and she'll resist anything that takes that away, because it, it makes it harder for us to negotiate and get people to comply if they think we, you know, if, if the only, bottom line for us is the same as the top line, we're gonna pay this fine, there's no discussion, then by all means, they just, their only remedy then is to take it to court. So, we, we want to keep some discretion there. The, but it's a practical matter, the, those people generally, once, once they're caught or once they find out that they needed the permit, are, as far as we know, interested in getting in compliance. Now, there are some other things going on there that color that. A lot of it depends on. on, you know, how did we find out about them, how long has this been going on, have they been actively dodging us, have they also been paying room tax, or have they not been paying room tax? So, there's, there's other pieces to that equation, but in a nutshell, that's what happens. We find out about it, send them the nasty letter, threaten them with a large fine, get them in here, get them compliant, and the fine gets substantially reduced in most cases.
Do you think that we're best off leaving that the way it is now?
Well, you raised some interesting questions about how that's interpreted, and I certainly don't have any objections to moving that to the substantive side of the equation, if that makes the rest of this an easier path forward for you. You certainly raised some, when Tammy and Alicia and I were drafting this up, we certainly did not have a discussion about that section in the depth that we've just had here, so you definitely shed some light on something we probably haven't considered.
Anybody have any objection to moving this into the other batch, and either they or we?
Well, you know, it's sitting here in front of us, and I look at this, and I say, Mark, how do you know how many days this sucker's been rented illegally?
We often don't, but we have ways of estimating it, either from their own records, in a couple cases, we've had neighbors who've kept track of vehicles, the police will also, you know, if there's a suspicion that somebody's renting illegally, they'll just go by at night and make a log note about cars that are parked there. So, you're right, we don't know exactly, but often we can figure it out. Occasionally, you get somebody who is starting a rental and really, literally doesn't understand the program, but they are paying the room taxes, and the room taxes, we can at least, we can get a very accurate estimate of how many days are involved. It's kind of an odd situation where they're compliant with half of the program and not compliant with the other, but that does happen.
Well, I think you have to go up against somebody who's pretty good in a court case, you know, based on this.
Well, we would too, and like I said, our overall goal is to just get them into compliance.
Well, I, you know, it seems to me that, you know, once you nab the critter, you know, and they're winning $500 a day, and they know that you're watching them, they'll come around. And you don't have to get into this battle over what did happen or didn't happen, and how many neighbors you got, you know, turning, you know, this person in or not, you know, suggesting that one neighbor is, you know, cooking the books and, you know, it's just a mess, you know? Just look at what you got, you know, and you got them red-handed, and you can start watching them. You know, and that might encourage neighbors who have this particular attention to, you know, categorize violations to actually draw to your attention, and you can actually have some data that you collected rather than word of mouth and so forth and so on, who's divorced from whom.
I guess, two things, one is, at least to my knowledge, we've never had somebody who we've sent one of these letters to come back and say, nope, nobody's ever stayed here overnight, if this doesn't happen, prove it.
I can give, well.
I was, I had a conversation, had an email communication with a neighbor who I went over and said, I don't mind you renting the place out, and the people that have stayed here have always been quiet and pleasant and so forth, I really think you ought to be paying room tax. And she said, we're not renting it out, it's all, you know, cops, you know, or our business associates and so forth, and I went online and about five minutes or less found Airbnb or whatever it was listing.
What's the address?
It's his neighbor, we can figure it out.
Yeah, we can, okay.
It's his bad cousin.
Since I became aware of that issue, I have encouraged Mark and, I don't remember, maybe some other city employees to move things, they had to have a compliance officer comparing the Airbnb listings and the people who have permits and are paying room taxes as a basis of raising money for the city.
Yeah, I guess, I reiterate, our goal is to get people into the program, not to collect fines, and I think I've told this to you, Chairman Lundy, I've had emails and phone calls from at least one company out there that has, I don't know, it may be a division of Airbnb for all I know, but they monitor websites for you and once a week give you a report about illegal rentals in your city in exchange for a percentage of the fine. This is like an electronic bounty hunter, so it's, I don't see us going in that direction. Really, our goal is to just get compliance, not to collect fines out of this.
Everybody's in trouble there.
Okay, I would like to take a straw poll to see how many people would like, or someone would like to just leave this the way it is considered, but it seems to be working okay. Can I show a hand to people who would be satisfied with that? I think that, okay, I think that's enough for now, unless anybody has anything to say.
Okay, I think we ought to make it clear whether it's, you know, going forward or going, you know, backwards, and the way this is written is really unclear, how do you why we're continuing to have, you know, a $500 fine attached to language that is odd.
Well, the intent here, I'm 100% confident is that it's to be retroactive as far back as we can determine accurately or even approximately what the number of days was, so the fixes, the last line was rented without a permit.
Exactly, that's an easy fix, it seems to me.
Last line on the middle box on page 21 would end, was rented without a permit. That certainly is the intent and the way we understood that type of, that language in the past.
And it says, shall be subject to a fine, and I gather that that doesn't, that means that they can be fined, but not necessarily they shall be.
That's the, what Tammy says, it's our prosecutorial discretion there.
Okay, anything else about has been renting? Okay, Mark?
Has been?
Okay, but you, has been?
Sure, that works, and the point is that it's backward-looking.
Okay, anybody think we need to have further discussion before a motion?
I'm not sure you've closed the hearing yet.
I did.
You did? Okay.
You did, you did.
Okay, good.
I think I did.
One of us was paying attention there, good.
I should have closed the hearing, I didn't, I appropriate now. Do I under a motion? When everybody speaks?
Well, somebody's forming a motion, this is a recommendation for the city council.
Yes.
I think, I think we can just move, let the document presented, the minor changes be read and made to the city council.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Any further discussion? Alicia?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
With your permission, I'll, when I do get this in a form ready for the city council, I will run it past you guys to make sure that I've understood all of the small changes, and we'll have at least a chance for you to correct me if I'm going to state on impact.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the chair to sign the appropriate orders for the first decision? Is it moved? Second?
Second.
Alicia?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Any comments or whatever on the tree report?
Were there any other, usually we have a larger report, so I was just kind of curious, is this the only trees for January?
Wasn't it very big?
You're not going to see a big one for February either, the weather was so bad that a lot of people weren't interested in doing maintenance. There were trees that were blown over by storms that were taken out, but those don't require permits.
Right.
So, I have an observation I wanted to ask you about, and that is, on 101 going south, it would be, it would be slightly north, and on the east side of the Warren Cove, there's a bunch of trees that have been cut, so what's that?
Yeah, ODOT has a very wide right-of-way there, and we were told, and ODOT verified that those are in the right-of-way. There's a statute, and I don't have the citation for it, but I can get it for you, that strictly prohibits cities from regulating tree cutting in ODOT's right-of-way. So, those trees were in the right-of-way, and ODOT informed us that they were doing it, that there is no permit for those. That's a decision ODOT makes. Generally, ODOT's pretty cooperative with us on those, and minimally notifies us of what they're going to be doing. It's maximally, say, in the Sunset Corridor area, they actually work with us to refine their tree-cutting plan. In this case, there was a, as I understand it, there was a storm-damaged tree, in order to get to it, they had to knock down some other trees, so that's my understanding of what happened there.
Well, it seemed very severe, it certainly doesn't seem warranted, I mean, if you're going to be cutting trees off from 101 up to property lines, then why not do the whole corridor? I mean, to me, this just seems outrageous that they would be cutting out a big chunk of trees the way they did there, rather than cutting down one that was damaged or fallen over. And so, you know, the other thing I want to know about is, because they talked about additional cuts in the corridor of 101, the big tape trees, so do you have any idea if there's a time where a person could object to what they're doing or review what they're doing?
I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any. I could certainly get you in contact with the staff person, it's an ODOT's editorial office who manages this special right-of-way, who we communicate with and is responsible for doing this. I will say that the person whose name is escaping me right now has been very forthcoming and easy to work with, he hasn't been bullisher about this, wasn't willing to cooperate with us on anything, but it's very, it's very clear that the bottom line is that they can cut those without the city's approval or permission, and there's a specific statute that was written to do just exactly that, so they, the bottom line is they can do what they want to. That said, they are willing to discuss that with us. I can give you the guy's name, and you can chase him down. You can also talk to the city manager, they, ODOT communicates quite often with our public works department and the city manager on this topic.
Well, you know, the initial complaint that we had with ODOT was addressed with twelve of us, and they went away from that, and of course, the supervisors at that time moved on, but they went away, more or less assuring us that they weren't going to be cutting down any of the trees, so now they've come back and they've tagged all those trees, and I don't see any justification for it. What I do object to is the fact that they have a number of trees that are at an angle that have fallen over, but they've never removed those, and so to me, it seems like it would be prudent to remove that, but to be cutting down these healthy, wide trees, to me, I think is really stupid.
And we are considered a scenic byway, which I think should have some requirements there for that, too.
Yeah, well, the other thing is, it's in the wetland, so the more trees, the more roots that are taking up, the more shirier, the better, and so this idea of thinning out because it's shading the flat, level part of 101 is rather stupid to me, that it should not happen.
Sounds like maybe it's something to bring up with our state representatives.
Yeah, well, certainly they have, and also the city council, might be able to say it's an issue that they're, you know.
I was reading through ODOT messages about 101, trying to figure out when I could drive down to Garibaldi, whether the slide four miles south or five miles south, Cannon Beach, was in the process of being cleared, never going to be cleared, one lane was going to be cleared, there might be flagging, they may close both things down in the next three weeks, or, you know, whatever, whatever they were after, and in all of that, there was another closure or a delay, potentially because of tree cutting along 101, and it was, I think, some assurance that this was a minimal effort on their part to, you know, thin trees out, not to lay waste to the whole area. And so, somebody must be, somebody must be taking your stand as well, and getting that reaction out of her.
I think so. Yeah, well, in the article, they were saying that they were thinning this because of the ice that would become a hazard, well, this is a flat, level part of 101, the hazards are in other places, but not there.
Except there are elk that sneak around.
Well, that's a different topic.
Okay, can we move along to the choices?
Yeah, this document that I sent out is a project that I worked on as a municipal representative in the city, and then the vice president, I think Chairman Lundy was on that also. The work was finished last year, there's a local implementation component, Meg Reed from DLCD has asked to be on our agenda to lead us through a workshop on this and explain how that might be implemented locally. This is a project that we agreed to cooperate with DLCD on several months ago, sometime last fall, and so the path on that project is for DLCD to work with us, gauge what sort of implementation measures might work best for our community, and then DLCD would help us draft those up and bring those back to the extent that they involve comp plan or zoning ordinance amendments, bring them back to you at some future date for hearing. This would be the first step in this. Meg's a relatively new employee at DLCD, but she really understands this stuff quite well, and I found her to be a pretty good person to work with. So, I've tentatively scheduled this as a work session item on March 23, unless you have some checking for that, or the agenda gets clogged up with some must-deal with bigger project that I'm not aware of yet. So, for tonight, it's just an informational only item, I will go ahead and do that unless you tell me otherwise, or I find an agenda topic that I would have to push this off. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else? Anything ordered?
Thanks very much.